In this video, I'll review AP Psychology Unit 2 in about fifty-five minutes. Occasionally throughout the video, I'll refer to the Unit 2 study guide and flashcards. You can grab these via the links in the description and pinned comment. The study guide is designed for you to fill out while watching this video, so you can thoroughly study this whole unit as fast as possible. Okay, let's dive in. Unit 2 covers cognition in eight sections. Let's dive right into the first section, which is titled Perception. Perception is the way we understand and interpret the world around us. It can be influenced by two different processes: bottom-up processing and top-down processing. Bottom-up processing happens when we rely mostly on sensory information: what we see, hear, touch, taste, or smell, without using past experiences. For example, if you see a new type of fruit for the first time, you analyze its color, shape, and texture to figure out what it might be like. On the other hand, top-down processing happens when we use what we already know: our expectations and experiences to interpret what we sense. If you see a blurry word on a sign, you might still be able to read it because your brain fills in the gaps based on what you expect it to say. Both types of processing help us make sense of the world, but they can also lead to different interpretations of the same situation. The next concepts you need to understand for Unit 2.1 are schemas and perceptual sets. A schema is a mental framework that helps us organize and understand information. For example, if you have a schema for classroom, you expect to see desks, a teacher, and students. A perceptual set is a readiness to perceive something in a certain way based on expectations. If someone tells you that a drink tastes terrible before you try it, you might expect it to taste bad and dislike it even if it's not that bad. Both schemas and perceptual sets influence how we interpret what we experience, sometimes helping us understand things more quickly, but sometimes leading to mistakes or biases. Right now, you might be wondering how on earth you'll remember all these terms. To help, you might want to grab the flashcards for this unit that I've linked in the description. Look over them daily to help commit the terms from Unit 2 into your memory. Now that you understand internal influences on perception, let's look at how external factors also play a role. External factors include the context of a situation, personal experiences, and cultural background. Contexts affect how people see the world by providing the background for their experiences. For example, someone from a noisy city might ignore sirens, while someone from a quiet town might find them alarming. Experiences shape how people understand things based on what they have been through. For example, someone who has had a bad experience with dogs as a child might assume all dogs are dangerous, even if most are friendly. Cultural experiences and expectations influence how people interpret behaviors and events based on their traditions and beliefs. Certain hand gestures can have vastly different meanings depending on the country. For instance, the "thumbs up" gesture is a sign of approval in the United States, but in some parts of the Middle East and South Asia, it can be considered offensive. These external factors shape how we see and respond to the world, showing that perception is not just about what enters our senses, but also about how we interpret that information. The next concept in Unit 2.1 is Gestalt psychology. According to Gestalt psychology, there are several principles governing how we tend to make sense of visual information. AP Psychology requires that you know the following Gestalt principles: closure, figure and ground, proximity, and similarity. The principle of closure states that we complete incomplete images in our minds, such as recognizing a broken circle as a full shape. Figure-ground perception helps us distinguish objects from their backgrounds. This is why we can focus on a single person in a crowded room. The principle of proximity shows that we tend to see objects that are close together as a group. The principle of similarity states that people tend to perceive objects that share similar characteristics such as color, shape, or size as being related. For example, in a design where circles and squares are arranged in a grid, people will naturally group the circles together and the squares together rather than seeing them as a random assortment. These principles help explain why we perceive order in the world, even when what we see is incomplete or complex. Now that you understand how we organize perception, it's time to pivot to the concept of attention. Attention is the mental process that allows us to focus on certain information while filtering out everything else. It acts as a bridge between sensation, what our senses detect, and perception, how our brain interprets that information. However, attention is limited, meaning we cannot process everything in our environment at once. Instead, our brain prioritizes certain details while ignoring others. Internal and external factors influence what we pay attention to at any given moment. Internal factors include things like our interests, emotions, and level of alertness. If you are excited about a topic in class, you are more likely to stay focused on the teacher's lecture. On the other hand, if you are tired or bored, your attention may wander. External factors include sudden changes in the environment, such as a loud noise, a flashing light, or someone calling your name. These unexpected stimuli can grab our attention even when we were focused on something else. Attention helps us concentrate on what matters to us. However, because attention is selective, it also means that we miss many things happening around us. To understand the pros and cons of selective attention, let's look at three effects: the cocktail party effect, inattention blindness, and change blindness. We'll start with the cocktail party effect. Imagine being in a crowded, noisy room where multiple conversations are happening at once. Even if you are not listening to every conversation, if someone says your name, your brain immediately picks it up. This proves that even when we think we are ignoring background noise, our brain is still processing some of it. Now, let's move on to inattentional blindness. Inattentional blindness occurs when a person fails to notice an unexpected object in their field of vision because their attention is focused elsewhere. This happens even though the object is clearly visible. A famous example is the invisible gorilla experiment, where participants were asked to count basketball passes. Because they were so focused on the basketball, they failed to see a person in a gorilla suit walking through the scene. Thirdly, we have change blindness. Change blindness happens when a person does not notice a change in a visual scene. Even when the change is large, people often fail to detect it because their brain does not automatically compare the before and after images. For example, in a movie scene, if an actor's shirt color changes between cuts, many viewers won't notice because their attention is on the overall action rather than the specific details. Now that you understand attention, we'll move on to the key information in AP Psychology about visual perception or how our eyes perceive the world. AP Psychology asks you to understand the difference between binocular and monocular depth cues. Binocular depth cues are visual cues that require both eyes to perceive depth and distance. AP Psychology requires that you know about two binocular depth cues: retinal disparity and convergence. Retinal disparity is the slight difference in the images perceived by each eye due to their different positions, which the brain uses to determine depth. Convergence is the inward movement of the eyes when focusing on a nearby object, with greater convergence indicating closer distance. Monocular depth cues are visual cues that require only one eye to perceive depth and distance. AP Psychology requires that you know about five monocular depth cues: relative clarity, relative size, texture gradient, linear perspective, and inner position. Relative clarity is the tendency for clearer and sharper objects to appear closer, while hazy or blurred objects appear farther away. Relative size is the perception that when two objects are known to be of similar size, the smaller one appears farther away. Texture gradient is the gradual decrease in detail and texture as an object's surface recedes into the distance, creating a sense of depth. Linear perspective is the appearance of parallel lines converging as they extend into the distance, creating the illusion of depth. Interposition is the perception that an object blocking part of another object is closer than the one it partially obscures. There are just two more things we need to cover for Unit 2.1. These are visual perceptual consistency and apparent movement. Visual perceptual consistency refers to the brain's ability to perceive objects as stable and unchanging despite variations in sensory input. For example, even when lighting conditions change or an object is viewed from different angles, its color, shape, and size are perceived as constant. This ability helps us navigate the world without being confused by minor changes in appearance. Apparent movement occurs when stationary objects are perceived as moving due to visual cues, such as rapid succession of images or changes in position. A good example is watching an animated movie where still images shown quickly in sequence give the illusion of movement. Another example is the phi phenomenon, where blinking lights in a row appear to move even though they are not. These effects prove that perception is not always reality. Our brain sometimes fills in movement where there is none. Okay, that's the end of Unit 2.1. Let's quickly review what you need to know about this unit for the AP Psychology exam. First, you need to know that perception is influenced by bottom-up processing, which uses sensory input, and top-down processing, which uses prior knowledge and expectations. Second, you need to know that schemas and perceptual sets are internal mental filters that shape how we perceive things. Third, you need to know that external factors like context, culture, and past experiences also influence how we interpret what we sense. Fourth, you need to know the Gestalt principles: closure, figure and ground, proximity, and similarity, which explain how we organize visual information. Fifth, you need to know that attention is how we focus perception, and it can be influenced by both internal goals and external stimuli. Sixth, you need to know the cocktail party effect, where you notice your name or something important to you even in a noisy room. Seventh, you need to know about inattentional blindness, where you miss something visible because your attention is focused elsewhere. Eighth, you need to know that change blindness happens when people fail to notice changes in their environment due to lack of attention. Ninth, you need to know that binocular depth cues like retinal disparity and convergence help us judge depth using both eyes. Tenth, you need to know that monocular depth cues like relative size, clarity, texture gradient, linear perspective, and inner position create the illusion of depth on flat surfaces. Eleventh, you need to know that perceptual constancy allows us to recognize objects as the same even when they look different from different angles or in different lighting. Twelfth, you need to know that we can perceive motion even when there is no actual movement, which is called apparent motion. If you're using the study guide, you should have now completed the Unit 2.1 section. Open the answer key now to check your work. If you don't quite understand everything and you're a premium member, you can jump into our Study Coach portal where I break down this unit in more detail. In the portal, you'll also find additional video explanations for common exam questions from Unit 2.1. Once you feel confident you understand everything in this section, we can move on to Unit 2.2: Thinking, Problem-Solving, Judgments, and Decision-Making. Let's dive into thinking first, which starts with the idea of concepts. Concepts are the foundation of all thinking. They are mental categories that help us group similar things together, making it easier to understand and navigate the world. For example, the concept of bird includes many different species, from sparrows to eagles, even though they have differences. Within each concept, we have a prototype, which is the best or most typical example of that category. For instance, when people think of a bird, they might picture a pigeon rather than an ostrich because those birds match their prototype more closely. Prototypes help us quickly recognize and classify new information, but they can also lead to errors if something does not fit our mental image. We can build on psychological concepts by forming schemas. A schema is a more complex mental framework that includes not just a category, but also expectations, knowledge, and associations about that category. Think of it this way: a concept is a basic category. For example, bird. A schema is a more detailed framework that tells you what you expect from that category. For example, birds have feathers, can fly, and build nests. Schemas allow us to make sense of the world by fitting new experiences into what we already know. However, schemas are not fixed; they change as we gain new information. According to Jean Piaget, there are two ways schemas are modified: assimilation and accommodation. Assimilation happens when we take in new information, but do not change our existing schema. For example, if a child has only ever seen small dogs and then sees a new small dog, they simply add it to their dog schema without adjusting anything. Here, the schema didn't require changes, so it's an example of assimilation. On the other hand, accommodation happens when new information forces a change in the schema itself. If that same child then sees a Great Dane, they may need to update their dog schema to include large dogs as well. Okay, so that's thinking. Now, let's look at problem solving. For problem solving, our key concepts are algorithms and heuristics. An algorithm is a step-by-step procedure that guarantees the right answer as long as it is followed correctly. Unlike relying on past experiences or quick guesses, an algorithm works by systematically testing every possible option until the correct one is found. For example, imagine you see a bird you have never encountered before. If you used an algorithmic approach to identify it, you would start by systematically testing all possible classifications. First, you would check if it fits into your existing songbird schema. If it does not, you would move to the next possible category, such as waterfowl, raptor, or waitingbird, carefully comparing its traits to every known species in a bird guide until you find a match. This method guarantees an accurate identification, but it takes a long time because you have to check every possibility one by one. While algorithms are useful for accuracy, they are often too slow for quick decisions. Because of this, people frequently rely on heuristics, which we'll discuss next. A heuristic is a mental shortcut or rule of thumb that simplifies problem solving by relying on experience and intuition rather than exhaustive analysis. There are two main types of heuristics: the representativeness heuristic and the availability heuristic. The representativeness heuristic is when we judge something based on how well it matches our expectations or stereotypes. For example, if someone describes a quiet person who loves reading, you might assume they are a librarian rather than a construction worker, even if the actual probability of that is low. The availability heuristic is when we make decisions based on the first or most vivid example that comes to mind. If you recently heard about a shark attack on the news, you might think shark attacks are more common than they really are, simply because the memory is fresh. Heuristics help us make fast decisions, but they can also lead to mistakes. For example, heuristics often cause stereotyping and cause us to rely too much on prior assumptions and biases. Okay, next up is decision-making. Decision-making can be influenced by prior experiences, known as a mental set, or the circumstances surrounding a decision. AP Psychology requires that you know about two aspects of circumstances: priming and framing. Let's start with mental sets. A mental set occurs when we rely on strategies that worked in the past, even if they are not the best solution in a new situation. For example, if you always solve a puzzle using a certain technique, you might struggle to try a different method, even if it would work better. Now, let's look at those two ways of using circumstances to make a decision: priming and framing. Priming happens when exposure to certain stimuli influences our decision-making. For example, if you hear the word "bird" multiple times in a conversation and then later see an ambiguous blurry image later on, you might be more likely to identify it as a bird quickly because it's what comes to mind quickly. Your brain has been primed to make the connection because it was recently exposed to related concepts. Framing refers to how a decision is presented. People tend to make different choices based on whether something is framed as a gain or a loss. For example, people are more likely to choose a medical treatment if they are told it has a ninety percent survival rate rather than a ten percent death rate, even though both statements mean the same thing. Next up, we need to look at things that prevent us from making good decisions. The two you need to know about for AP Psychology are: the gambler's fallacy and the sunk cost fallacy. The gambler's fallacy occurs when people believe that past events affect future probabilities in situations where the outcomes are actually random. For example, if someone flips a coin and gets heads five times in a row, they might believe tails is due to happen next, even though each flip is independent and still has a fifty-fifty chance. The sunk cost fallacy happens when people continue investing time, money, or effort into something because they have already invested so much, even when it no longer makes sense. For example, someone might keep watching a boring movie just because they paid for the ticket, even though they would rather leave. These errors in thinking show that logic does not always guide decision-making. So, that's it for poor decision-making. But what about good decision-making? For this, we need to know about executive functions. Executive functions are the mental skills that allow people to set goals, make plans, and stay organized. These functions help individuals control their impulses, manage their emotions, and think critically before making decisions. For example, when a student plans out their homework schedule to avoid procrastination, they are using executive function skills. Someone with weak executive functions might struggle with time management, get easily distracted, or have trouble following through with long-term goals. Strong executive functioning is essential for success in school, work, and everyday life. The last thing you need to know about for Unit 2.2 is creativity. AP Psychology requires that you know how to define creativity by referring to divergent versus convergent thinking. It also requires that you know how functional fixedness can hinder creativity. Let's start with divergent versus convergent thinking. Divergent thinking involves exploring many unique possible solutions to a single problem, many of which might be out of the ordinary. This is at the core of creativity. In contrast, convergent thinking focuses on finding a single correct solution. Convergent thinking is useful for structured problem-solving, but less effective for coming up with creative solutions. For example, a creative thinker with divergent thinking skills might find ten different uses for a paperclip, while a convergent thinker only identifies one. Creativity can be limited by functional fixedness, which happens when people struggle to see new uses for familiar objects. For example, imagine you're in a library and in desperate need of a paperweight. You look far and wide for a specialized store-bought paperweight, failing to realize you could just use a book to hold down the paper. If you're following along with the study guide, it's time to check your work for Unit 2.2 using the answer key. On the screen now, you'll see a list of terms from the unit. You can grab the flashcards for all these terms using the resources link in the description. When you're ready, we'll move on to Unit 2.3, titled Introduction to Memory. Unit 2.3 explores various types of memory and memory models. Before we start this section, be warned that there are a lot of memory models here. I recommend filling out the diagrams in the study guide as we go through the slides. This will help you to consolidate this information in your mind. Now, let's dive in. To start, AP Psychology requires you to know about several specific types of memory. These include explicit memory, which breaks down to episodic memory and semantic memory; implicit memory, which also contains procedural memory, and prospective memory. Let's explore each type. Explicit memory is the type of memory we can consciously recall and explain. Episodic memory, a subtype of explicit memory, refers to personal experiences. If you remember your last birthday party or your first day of school, you're using episodic memory. These memories are tied to specific times and places. Semantic memory, the other subtype, is knowledge about facts and concepts that are not linked to personal experiences. Knowing that birds have feathers or that the capital of France is Paris are examples of semantic memory. Unlike episodic memory, semantic memory does not require recalling when or where you learned the information. Implicit memory is the kind of memory that influences our behavior without us consciously thinking about it. Nested under implicit memory is procedural memory, which stores information about how to perform tasks. For example, if you know how to ride a bike, you are using procedural memory. You do not have to think about every movement; it happens automatically. The same applies to skills like typing on a keyboard, brushing your teeth, or playing a musical instrument. Even though you know how to do these things, explaining every step in detail would be difficult because the memory is stored in a way that makes it feel automatic. Perspective memory is the ability to remember to do something later. This type of memory allows us to plan ahead and follow through with future intentions. For example, remembering to take medicine at a certain time, picking up groceries after work, or calling a friend on their birthday are all examples of prospective memory. Unlike other types of memory, prospective memory involves thinking about the future rather than recalling past experiences or facts. Now that we've covered different types of memory, we need to explore how memory is strengthened at the biological level. One important biological process involved in memory is called long-term potentiation. Long-term potentiation occurs when neurons in the brain repeatedly activate together, strengthening the connections between them. The more often a neural pathway is used, the stronger it becomes, making it easier for the brain to recall information. This is why practicing a skill, like playing an instrument or studying for a test, makes it easier to remember over time. The remainder of Unit 2.3 explores three memory models: the working memory model, the multi-store model, and the levels of processing model. Let's start with the working memory model. Working memory is a temporary system that helps us hold and manipulate information while we use it. It is responsible for things like solving math problems in our head, following a conversation, or remembering a phone number long enough to dial it. Working memory has three main parts that work together to help us process information before it is stored in long-term memory. These are the central executive, the phonological loop, and the visuospatial sketchpad. The central executive is the system that directs attention and controls how information is processed. The phonological loop holds and repeats verbal information, like remembering a grocery list or repeating a phone number. The visuospatial sketchpad processes visual and spatial information, like imagining a map while giving someone directions. Now, let's look at the multi-store model. This model describes how information moves through different memory systems. It identifies three main types of memory: sensory memory, short-term memory, and long-term memory. Sensory memory briefly holds raw sensory information. It includes iconic memory, which is visual information that lasts less than a second, and echoic memory, which is auditory information that lasts a few seconds. Most sensory memory fades unless we pay attention to it. Short-term memory holds a small amount of information for about twenty to thirty seconds. If we do not actively rehearse the information, it disappears. Long-term memory stores information indefinitely. This is where knowledge, experiences, and skills are kept for future use. The multi-store model also explains two ways we process information: automatic processing and effortful processing. Automatic processing happens without effort, like remembering what you ate for breakfast. Effortful processing requires focus and practice, like memorizing vocabulary words for AP Psychology. That's why I've provided flashcards that contain words from this unit. Grab them from the link in the description and start effortlessly processing the terms for your exam. For AP Psychology, you also need to know the levels of processing model. This model suggests that the way we encode information affects how well we remember it. There are three levels of processing, ranked from shallow to deep. In order, they are structural processing, phonemic processing, and semantic processing. Structural processing is the most shallow level. It involves remembering how something looks, like noticing that a word is written in capital letters. Phonemic processing is a deeper level, focusing on how something sounds, like remembering a word because it rhymes with another word. Semantic processing is the deepest level based on meaning. If you link a new word to a personal experience or connect it to something you already know, you are using semantic processing. The deeper the level of processing, the stronger the memory will be. This is why students who focus on understanding concepts rather than just memorizing definitions tend to remember information better. This is also why I've provided you with the AP Psychology Study Guide, where you can test and demonstrate your understanding of the concepts we're discussing in this video. Grab it in the description if you haven't got it yet. Pause the screen now to check all the key terms from Unit 2.3. I've also added these terms to the flashcard set available in the description. If you feel confident you understand this unit, we can move on to Unit 2.4, titled encoding memories. Encoding is the process of taking in information and preparing it for storage. Unit 2.4 is all about the methods of encoding information so it can be most efficiently stored in the mind and retrieved later on. This section is really useful for you as a student because it reveals the most effective study methods according to psychology. The encoding methods you'll need to remember and understand for this unit are: mnemonic devices, including the method of Loki; information grouping, including chunking, categorizing, and making hierarchies; the spacing effect, including masked practice and distributed practice; and the serial position effect, including the primacy effect and the recency effect. Each of these methods represents strategies we can use to commit information to memory. Let's start with mnemonic devices. Instead of simply trying to memorize a list of facts, mnemonic devices create mental associations that make the information easier to recall. One well-known mnemonic technique is the method of Loki. You'll need to remember this method because it's explicitly stated in the AP Psychology curriculum. This strategy involves associating pieces of information with specific locations. For example, if you need to remember a grocery list, you could imagine placing each item in a different room of your house. When you mentally walk through your house, you recall each item by picturing it in its assigned location. Other mnemonic strategies include acronyms, which involve using the first letter of each word to create a new, easy-to-remember word. For example, PEMDAS for the Order of Operations in Math, rhymes in songs which involve encoding information into a catchy tune or rhyme to aid recall, and imagery, which involves creating vivid mental pictures to help remember information. Next up is organizing information into meaningful groups. Three effective ways to improve encoding through organization into groups are chunking, categorization, and hierarchies. Chunking involves breaking down long pieces of information into smaller, more manageable parts. For example, instead of trying to remember a long string of numbers, it is easier to group them into chunks. Categorization involves grouping related information together. If you are memorizing a list of animals, grouping them into categories like mammals, birds, and reptiles makes recall easier. Hierarchies involve structuring information from general to specific. For example, if learning about memory, you could start with memory as a broad category and then break it down into explicit memory and implicit memory, followed by subcategories like episodic and semantic memory. Essentially, we've been using hierarchies a lot in this video to help you memorize this information. Another way to encode information in your memory is to use the spacing effect. Essentially, this is about how much we space out our studying of information. To understand this, we need to know about two types of practice: masked practice and distributed practice. Masked practice involves studying everything in one long session. Colloquially, we call it cramming. While this might help in the short term, the information is often forgotten quickly. Distributed practice involves studying in multiple shorter sessions over time. This leads to better long-term retention because the brain has time to consolidate the information. For example, a student who studies vocabulary words for twenty minutes every day for a week will remember them better than a student who crams for two hours the night before a test. The spacing effect is one of the most effective ways to improve encoding and memory retention. Next up, we need to know about the serial position effect. The serial position effect explains why we remember some parts of a list better than others. It states that items at the beginning and end of a list are easier to recall than those in the middle. There are two key effects within the serial position effect: the primacy effect and the recency effect. The primacy effect is the tendency to remember information presented at the beginning of a list better than information in the middle. This happens because the first items receive more attention and rehearsal, making them easier to transfer into long-term memory. The recency effect is the tendency to remember the last items in a list better than those in the middle. This occurs because the most recent information remains in short-term memory, making it easier to recall immediately. For example, if someone is given a long list of words and asked to recall them, they will likely remember the first few words and the last few words, but struggle with the ones in the middle. The serial position effect shows that timing matters when learning new information. If you want to improve recall, reviewing important details at both the beginning and end of a study session can help reinforce memory. So those are the key principles of encoding. As always, check you understand the key terms and concepts from this section. They're listed on the screen now. I've added them all to the flashcard set for you as well. You should have completed the unit two point four section of the study guide now. Check your answers using the answer key before proceeding, and when you're ready, we'll move on to unit two point five. Storing Memories. Earlier in unit two, we explored several categories of memory. We start unit two point five by returning to four key categories: sensory memory, short-term memory, working memory, and long-term memory. For unit two point five, we need to cover how these categories of memory differ in storage duration, capacity, and content. Sensory memory holds information from our senses for a very brief period, just a few seconds or less. It includes iconic memory, visual images that last for a fraction of a second, and echoic memory, sounds that linger for a few seconds. Most sensory memory disappears unless we pay attention to it. Short-term memory holds small amounts of information for about twenty to thirty seconds. If you don't rehearse it, the information is quickly lost. For example, when you hear a phone number and remember it just long enough to dial it, you are using short-term memory. Working memory is a more active version of short-term memory. It helps us hold and manipulate information while we are using it. For example, when solving a math problem in your head or following multi-step directions, you rely on working memory. Long-term memory is where information is stored indefinitely. Unlike short-term or working memory, long-term memory has a much larger capacity and can hold information for years or even a lifetime. We can also prolong memory storage through memory rehearsal. There are two main forms of memory rehearsal: maintenance rehearsal and elaborative rehearsal. Maintenance rehearsal is simple repetition. It involves repeating information over and over to keep it in short-term memory. For example, if you keep repeating a phone number until you can write it down, you are using maintenance rehearsal. While this technique helps in the short term, it is not the most effective way to move information into long-term memory. Elaborative rehearsal is a deeper form of rehearsal that connects new information to things you already know. It involves creating meaning, which strengthens memory storage. For example, instead of just memorizing vocabulary words, you could make connections by using them in sentences, associating them with personal experiences, or linking them to images. While rehearsal strategies help improve memory, some people naturally have better memory storage than others. Let's look at an extreme example: people with highly superior autobiographical memory. People with highly superior autobiographical memory can remember almost every detail of their lives, including events from decades ago as if they happened yesterday. This ability suggests that memory storage is influenced not just by learning and rehearsal, but also by biological factors. Even for the rest of us mere mortals, autobiographical memory, which refers to memories connected to our own lives, is typically stronger than memory for random facts. This is why you are more likely to remember details about your own birthday than a historical event you read about in a textbook. Personal relevance strengthens memory storage, making experiences tied to emotions and self-identity more memorable. While some people have exceptional memory, others experience memory impairments due to physical or developmental conditions. Memory storage can be disrupted by a range of factors and conditions. Three common conditions that affect memory are amnesia, Alzheimer's disease, and infantile amnesia. Amnesia refers to memory loss caused by injury, illness, or psychological trauma. There are two main types: retrograde and anterograde. Retrograde amnesia is the loss of past memories, often caused by brain injury or disease. A person with retrograde amnesia might forget events from their past, but still be able to form new memories. Anterograde amnesia is the inability to form new long-term memories. This happens when the brain's ability to transfer information from short-term to long-term storage is damaged. A person with anterograde amnesia may remember their past, but struggle to remember what happened just minutes ago. Alzheimer's disease is a progressive brain disorder that leads to memory loss, confusion, and difficulty with thinking and reasoning. It primarily affects older adults and is linked to the deterioration of brain cells over time. Infantile amnesia refers to the common inability to remember events from early childhood. Most people cannot recall memories from before the age of three, likely because the brain structures involved in long-term memory, such as the hippocampus, are still developing during infancy. Okay, here's a summary of the key terms from unit two point five. As usual, grab the flashcards for this section from the link in the description, and check your answers to this section of the study guide using the answer key. Now that you understand how memories are stored, you are ready to move on to unit two point six. Unit two point six explores the process of retrieving memories from memory storage. It begins with an exploration of the two main types of retrieval: recall and recognition. Next, it explores conditions where memory retrieval can be enhanced, including context-dependent memory, mood-congruent memory, and state-dependent memory. Then it highlights two retrieval practice techniques that enhance memory retrieval: the testing effect and metacognition. Let's get started. Memory retrieval is the process of accessing information that has been stored in our brain. There are two main types of memory retrieval: recall and recognition. Recall is when you remember information without any cues or hints. This is the hardest type of retrieval because your brain must pull the memory out on its own. For example, answering an essay question on a test requires recall because you must generate the answer from memory without multiple choice options to help you. Recognition is when you identify something familiar from a set of choices. This type of retrieval is easier because your brain only needs to recognize the correct information rather than generate it. Multiple-choice questions on a test are an example of recognition. Seeing the right answer among the choices helps trigger your memory. Next up, we're looking at conditions that can enhance memory retrieval. There are three conditions you need to know about: context-dependent memory, mood-congruent memory, and state-dependent memory. Context-dependent memory occurs when being in the same physical environment where a memory was first formed helps recall it more easily. For example, if you study for a test in your classroom, you might remember the material better when you take the test in the same room rather than a different study hall. Mood-congruent memory means that emotions influence what we remember. When you are in a happy mood, you are more likely to recall happy memories, and when you are sad, you might find it easier to recall sad experiences. This explains why moods can reinforce themselves. When you feel down, your brain naturally pulls up memories that match that emotion. State-dependent memory occurs when your physical state affects retrieval. For example, if you learn something while you are feeling energized from drinking coffee, you might recall it better when you are in the same alert state later. Another way to strengthen retrieval is through specific retrieval practice techniques, which we will discuss next. Two key techniques that enhance retrieval are the testing effect and metacognition. The testing effect refers to the idea that actively retrieving information strengthens memory more than simply reviewing it. For example, students who take practice quizzes remember information better than those who simply reread their notes. It's also why viewers of this video who fill out the study guide will remember more than viewers who just sit and watch the video. Essentially, actively engaging with information forces the brain to strengthen retrieval pathways. Metacognition is thinking about how you think. When students reflect on what they know and what they still need to review, they improve their ability to retrieve information later. For example, if you quiz yourself and realize you cannot recall a specific fact, you know to focus on that fact when you study next time. As usual, here is a list of key terms from this section, which have been added to the flashcard set linked in the video description. Now that you understand how memories are retrieved, you are ready to move on to unit two point seven, titled Forgetting and Other Memory Challenges. Unit two point seven explores four categories of memory challenges. First, it examines the forgetting curve, which explains how fast we forget information. This section then explores three reasons we might fail to retrieve information from memory. Next, it explores the psychodynamic concept of memory repression. And fourth, we explore three situations where our memories of events or facts might become inaccurate and unreliable. Let's look at the forgetting curve first. The forgetting curve discovered by psychologist Herman Ebbinghaus shows that memory loss happens rapidly after learning, but slows down over time. Immediately after learning something new, we start forgetting it quickly, unless we review or reinforce the information. However, after the initial drop, memory stabilizes, meaning the rate of forgetting slows down. This explains why studying material just once is not enough for long-term retention. Spaced repetition, or reviewing information at increasing intervals, helps prevent this rapid decline in memory. Okay, next we have retrieval failure, which refers to situations where we struggle to retrieve memories from our mind. There are three main reasons for retrieval failure: encoding failure, interference, and inadequate retrieval. Encoding failure occurs when information never fully enters memory in the first place. If you never paid attention to a detail like the color of a new acquaintance's shoes, you will not be able to recall it later. Interference happens when similar memories get mixed up. There are two types of interference: proactive interference and retroactive interference. Proactive interference occurs when old information blocks new learning. For example, if you learned Spanish in high school and then start learning French, your knowledge of Spanish might interfere with your ability to remember new French vocabulary. The second is retroactive interference. This occurs when new information makes it harder to remember old information. For example, if you get a new phone number, you might have trouble recalling your old one. Inadequate retrieval refers to when you feel like you know something but cannot quite retrieve it. Colloquially, we call this the tip-of-the-tongue phenomenon. This happens because the memory is stored, but the retrieval cues are not strong enough. For example, you might recognize a celebrity's face but can't recall their name, or the movie you saw them in. Now let's look at memory repression. According to psychodynamic theorists, some forgetting is a psychological defense mechanism. Theorists call this type of forgetting repression. This is the idea that people unconsciously push distressing or traumatic memories out of awareness to protect themselves from emotional pain. Sigmund Freud, the founder of psychoanalysis, believed that repression helps the mind cope with anxiety or negative emotions. For example, a person who experienced a traumatic childhood event may have no conscious memory of it, even though it may still influence their behavior. The next thing you need to know for unit two point seven is that memories are not perfect recordings of the past. Instead, they can be altered, distorted, or even created due to different cognitive processes. Several factors influence the accuracy of memory, including the misinformation effect, source amnesia, and constructive memory. The misinformation effect occurs when people's memories become distorted by misleading information. For example, in a classic study by Elizabeth Loftus, participants watched a video of a car crash. When asked how fast the cars were going when they smashed into each other, participants estimated higher speeds than when they were asked how fast the cars were going when they hit each other. The change of wording from smashed to hit within the researcher's question changed their memory of the event. This shows that the introduction information after the event can change people's memory of the event. Next is source amnesia. This occurs when people remember information but forget where it came from. For example, if you hear a fact from a friend but later think you came across it in a news article, you are experiencing source amnesia. This can lead people to misattribute memories or believe false information. Thirdly, we have constructive memory. This is the idea that memories are actively built, not just retrieved. There are two types of constructive memory: memory consolidation and imagination inflation. During memory consolidation, details may be altered or filled in with assumptions. Imagination inflation occurs when someone repeatedly imagines an event so much that they begin to believe it actually happened. All this psychological research demonstrates that memories are not always reliable. This has major implications for eyewitness testimony, personal recollections, and even our sense of identity. Okay, here are the key terms from unit two point seven, which have been added to the flashcard set that's linked in the description. Now that you understand why memories can be lost or distorted, you are ready to move on to unit two point eight. In our final section for unit two, we explore intelligence and achievement testing. We start by comparing theories of intelligence. Then we look at how psychologists measure intelligence and issues they face when conducting intelligence tests. Then we look at measurements of academic achievement, which differs from intelligence, and conclude with a discussion of how people's beliefs about their own intelligence affect their academic achievement. Let's get started with theories of intelligence. One of the earliest theories of intelligence was developed by Charles Spearman, who proposed the idea of general intelligence, often referred to as G. According to Spearman, intelligence is a broad ability that influences performance across different cognitive tasks. This means that a person who excels in one area, such as mathematical reasoning, is likely to perform well in other areas, such as verbal skills or problem-solving, because intelligence is a single overarching ability. In contrast, other psychologists argue that intelligence consists of multiple intelligences that function independently. For example, Howard Gardner suggests that people can be intelligent in different ways, such as through musical, linguistic, spatial, or interpersonal skills. Similarly, Robert Sternberg proposed the triarchic theory of intelligence, which identifies three types of intelligence: analytical intelligence, which is problem-solving and logical reasoning, creative intelligence, which is innovation and originality, and practical intelligence, which is common sense and adaptability. One of the earliest approaches to intelligence testing involved calculating a person's intelligence quotient, known as IQ, by dividing their mental age by their chronological age and then multiplying the result by one hundred. Mental age refers to the level of cognitive ability a person demonstrates on a standardized test. Chronological age refers to their actual age. For example, if a ten-year-old child has the For example, if a ten-year-old child has the cognitive abilities of a twelve-year-old, their IQ would be one hundred twenty. Today, IQ scores are often used in education to identify students who may need additional support, such as placement in gifted programs or special education services. However, for intelligence tests to be meaningful, they must follow strict psychometric principles, which we will now explore. A meaningful intelligence test must meet three key criteria: standardization, validity, and reliability. Standardization refers to the process of administering a test under the same conditions for all participants. This ensures that the results are not affected by differences in testing environments. For example, if one group of students takes a test in a quiet room, while another group takes it in a noisy classroom, the results may not be comparable. Validity refers to whether a test measures what it is supposed to measure. There are two important types of validity. Construct validity refers to whether the test accurately measures intelligence, or if it is measuring something else, such as test-taking skills. Predictive validity refers to whether the test can accurately predict future performance in areas such as academics or work. Reliability refers to the consistency of test results over time. There are two major types of reliability. Test-retest reliability refers to whether a person's test scores remain similar when they take the same test on different occasions. Split-half reliability refers to whether different sections of the same test yield similar results, ensuring that the test is internally consistent. One of the major challenges in intelligence testing is ensuring fairness across different cultural and social groups. Researchers strive to create assessments that minimize bias and do not disadvantage individuals based on their background. For this, you need to know about stereotype threat and stereotype lift. Stereotype threat occurs when people feel anxiety about confirming a negative stereotype related to their social group. This anxiety can interfere with performance, leading to lower scores. For example, if female students are reminded of the stereotype that "boys are better at math," they may perform worse on a math test, even if they are just as capable. The opposite effect, called stereotype lift, occurs when people perform better because they are reminded of a positive stereotype about their group. Next up, we need to examine social issues that can arise when using intelligence tests. AP Psychology requires you know about the Flynn Effect, IQ variations within groups, and job discrimination. Over the past century, the Flynn Effect has shown that average IQ scores have steadily increased across many countries. Researchers believe this increase is due to several societal improvements, rather than genetic changes. Three societal factors that have contributed to the Flynn Effect are: education, healthcare, and nutrition. Education has improved, with more people having access to schooling and educational resources. Healthcare has advanced, leading to better brain development, especially in early childhood. And nutrition has improved, which has contributed to better cognitive growth and overall brain function. These factors suggest that intelligence is shaped by the environment and can improve over time. One common misconception is that IQ differences between groups are large, but in reality, researchers have found that there is more variation within groups than between groups. In other words, individual differences in intelligence are greater than any differences between racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic groups. However, environmental factors such as poverty, discrimination, and educational inequities can negatively impact IQ scores. For example, a child who grows up in a low-income neighborhood with fewer educational resources may not score as well on an intelligence test, not because of lower ability but because of differences in access to learning opportunities. Furthermore, intelligence testing has sometimes been misused to restrict people's opportunities in life. Some examples include employment, education, and immigration. Employers and military organizations have used IQ scores to determine who qualifies for certain jobs or leadership positions. Schools have used intelligence tests to place students in advanced or remedial programs, sometimes reinforcing existing biases. The US once used intelligence testing as part of its immigration policies to exclude individuals from certain countries. Because of this history, intelligence testing remains controversial, and researchers continue working toward fairer and more inclusive assessments. Besides intelligence tests, AP Psychology requires you to know about two types of academic assessment: achievement tests and aptitude tests. Achievement tests measure what a person has already learned. Standardized tests, such as final exams in the SAT, are examples of achievement tests. Aptitude tests predict how well a person might perform in the future. For example, the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery is used to determine suitability for various military jobs. Both types of tests play a role in education and career planning, but how people approach learning also matters, which brings us to mindsets. Psychologist Carol Dweck found that how people think about intelligence affects their success. Dweck came up with two mindsets that affect achievement: fixed mindsets and growth mindsets. People with a fixed mindset believe intelligence is unchangeable and that effort does not make much of a difference. People with a growth mindset believe intelligence can improve with effort and learning. Students with a growth mindset tend to achieve more because they see challenges as opportunities to grow. So, you've now got all the key information you need for Unit 2, but you'll need to have the ability to apply it in the exam. So, here's what you need to do next: Grab the study guide in the video description to reinforce your knowledge of the information. Become a premium member to get an edge on your studies. You'll get in-depth tutorials and video walkthroughs of common Unit 2 questions you could face in the AP exam and advanced study guides to help you ace the exam. And once you feel confident about Unit 2, click the video on screen now to watch my full AP Psychology Unit 3 review.